Hello. I have six o'clock. It's time to get started. Let's go ahead and rise for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, thank you. Uh, let's do roll call.
Ready?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll go and, uh, everybody should have a copy of the agenda. Let's do approval of the agenda.
Salute.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. No opposed? Okay, let's do the regular, um, meeting minutes from last month's meeting. Uh, entertain a motion to approve. And second?
Second.
Alright, all those approved? Aye. And? Alright, okay. Against, okay, sorry. And I think we're moving on now to, um, the student champions.
Good evening. I have the privilege of introducing you to three student champions this month, and we're going to start with a student from Capital City High School, Abinav Pula. Abinav is the son of Raghu Pula. He has taken a total of fourteen AP courses. He scored a thirty-five on the ACT, is ranked fifth in his class, is an AP scholar with distinction. He attended Missouri Scholars Academy, Boy's State, was a runner-up at the Waynesville Double Tennis, Doubles Tennis Tournament. He played varsity tennis, was a member of National Honor Society, was the secretary of Cyber Club. He has an internship at a local company, and he plans to study data and computer science at either Mizzou, Missouri S&amp;T, or SLU. And he wants to become a data scientist in the future. Congratulations, Abinav. It's okay. I'll get you a plaque and then I'll take a picture with all of you, okay? Next up, from Capital City High School, Sadia Topawala. Sadia is the daughter of Juned and Enisa Topawala. Throughout high school, she has challenged herself with a rigorous curriculum, including over ten AP courses, while maintaining a cumulative GPA above four point oh. Her dedication was recognized in her sophomore year when she was honored with the top Scholar and Jeffersonian Award, and a result of this, she now is in the top five percent of her graduating class. She seeks to bring the same level of dedication from academics to athletics, and she set a personal goal to earn a varsity letter in tennis. She is proud that she achieved that milestone. She is involved in tennis, Scholar Bowl, Archery, National Honor Society, Chess Club, and she plans to get a bachelor's in electrical engineering. Congratulations. And finally, from Jeff City High School, Ella Gingrich. Ella is the daughter of Shawna and Moses Gingrich. She has a four point oh six one GPA, scored a thirty on the ACT, and is ranked seventh in her class. By graduation, she will have night twenty-nine college credits, and she is one credit short of completing her freshman year of college, will be. She has taken AP Language and Composition, AP Literature and Composition, AP Calculus AB, AP Calculus BC, AP Government and Politics, and AP European History. She was chosen to compete in a French competition for men Missouri high school students and placed first in the reading and grammar sections, and second in the quiz bowl. She is a Lady J golfer with the team placing first at districts this year. Out of four hundred athletes in the Athletic Strength and Training Program at JC, she was named the top female athlete for February of two thousand and twenty-five. She is in the Corral Choir and have had the privilege to compete in multiple solos, ensemble, and large group competitions. She has earned the honor of being a two-time solo silver medalist at state, a two-time gold medalist with Corral at the choir large group contest, a three-time member of all district honors choir. She is the JC chapter president and the National Honor Society. She has gone on six mission trips with Union Hill Baptist Church and plans to go on two more before college. She made a goal to be a balanced student athlete, and she feels like she has achieved this thus far, sounds like it. She has donated blood four times and signed up to donate again on the twentieth. And she is also in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes and the president of the National Honor Society. For the past two summers, she has babysat and worked for Sports Crusaders, and she plans to become a teacher. Either elementary or high school math will take you for either one. And, uh, she's currently undecided on what school, but plans to stay in state. Congratulations.
Alright, next we have Gary Versoys with Staff Champions.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present the November Staff Champions. With the following teachers, please come forward. From Jefferson City High School, Family and Consumer Science Teachers Sonia Fork and Mindy Moss. And from Capital City High School, Business Teacher Cynthia Stegman. Tonight, we are fortunate to be recognizing these three teachers for having the dedication and passion for providing authentic learning opportunities for students that extend beyond the walls of their classrooms and will serve the students in their journey into adulthood. First, Sonia and Mindy, in the Kids Feeding Kids program. What started with a training this past summer and the question of, do you think we can pull this off, Mrs. Sonia Fork and Mrs. Mindy Moss transformed the Foods One and Foods Two classrooms into a real-world learning experience as their students tackled the problem of food insecurity, which students learned affects one in ten Missourians. During the week of October fourteenth, utilizing skills they had learned in class up until that point, the classes prepped, cooked, and packaged chicken fried rice to distribute to members of the Jefferson City community. On October eighteenth, despite the thunderstorms that plagued the distribution from the very beginning through the end, four hundred and eighty meals were distributed to the community and Salvation Army. Their goal was two hundred and fifty meals. The Kids Feeding Kids program has three primary curriculum objectives. Demonstrate culinary skills needed to create a high volume of nutrition-rich meals while adhering to industry standards for food safety and sanitation. Analyze root causes of food insecurity and evaluate local human services that facilitate the distribution of healthy family meals. Apply principles of community service by engaging students in the preparation of the free meals for families in their community. In addition to these primary curriculum objectives, Kids Feeding Kids emphasizes meaningful, real-world learning for high school students, impactful student engagement and community service, classroom lessons that will last a lifetime. The program is a fully fun, is fully funded through the Kids Feeding Kids program out of Kansas City. The program will run again in the spring, and they are looking forward to securing local sponsorships for future events, as well as being a host site for training of other schools this coming summer. Ladies and gentlemen, Sonia Fork and Mindy Moss. And now Cynthia Stegman in the Financial Reality Check. Reality Check, developed and hosted by Central Bank, is a financial education program that helps students understand the value of a dollar and budgeting while developing necessary tools to understand what it's like to be finite financially responsible. Through hands-on, real-world scenarios, participants experience the challenges and responsibilities of earning, budgeting, and spending wisely. Students were provided a Reality Check life scenario indicating monthly income, marital status, family status, taxes, and insurance deductions. After receiving their life scenario, students had to visit each table representing expenses such as housing, food, insurance, entertainment, transportation, and utilities. One of the favorite ones that I saw of the Reality Check program was if a student ran out of money during this little cycle, they had a table go to go to called the SOS table. I think in our lives, that's called mom and dad's debit card. This had to be interesting because some of the additional expenses students had to consider were student loans, childcare, clothing, cell phones, internet, streaming, furniture, salon expenses, retirement, not to mention seven ruined Starbucks. Central Bank had support from their employees, local business owners, and the Missouri Highway Patrol at the booths. Missouri Treasurer Malik's Chief of Staff delivered the opening speech and emphasized the importance of financial literacy. The students were fully engaged and clearly received a valuable Reality Check. When students were asked at the end, who is going to go home and thank your caregiver after this, hands shot up. Ms. Stegman stated, "My job as a teacher is to guide and inform my students in many different ways, and this simulation was one way to get the students actively involved and help them practice making financial decisions for situations adult life may and will throw at them." Ladies and gentlemen, Cynthia Stegman.
Alright, next we have open forum. This is the time where anyone from the community is welcome to come forward if they give their name, their address, and what agenda item they will be speaking on. And you can speak for up to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, uh, we can move on to, uh, board reports. We'll start with Mr. McGraw.
Yes, uh, our November, uh, board report lot going on so far. School Psychology Awareness Week, Parents' Teachers Month, uh, National STEM Day. This, uh, past Tuesday, we had Veterans Day ceremonies throughout the district in, in many of our schools. Uh, ceremonies were tremendous, well-attended by community members, parents, grandparents, relatives. It was just, uh, you know, from elementary to secondary, uh, kids did a great job, uh, and principals putting it together, so we thanked them for doing that, honoring our veterans. APR was recently released, and I think you've, uh, read about it in the paper, uh, but we've made some strong increases over the last couple of years. Fifteen percent increase, uh, started at seventy point nine, seventy-six point seven, eighty-three seven, and then, uh, this past year eighty-five point two. So we're really proud of that increase, um, in a district our size. Uh, we have getting momentum in all areas. You know, you talk about APR, graduation rate, our AP scores, which you heard from a lot of students here today taking fourteen AP courses and passing all of them. Uh, our goal is to get to ninety, though, uh, and, and we're gonna get there. Uh, we're gonna continue to grow in all areas. Uh, one of the big things, math increased in ten of eleven schools, and, uh, the one that didn't had one of our highest scores. So, uh, we're going up in math. We've committed to going up in math, and, uh, our math performance went from fifty percent to seventy-five percent. So, uh, strong increases across the board. Thank Dr. Bo Yoo, the curriculum team, the teachers, and administrators for all their hard work, uh, and, and moving that APR number up. Uh, it's extremely hard to do, and, uh, it shows that our, our kids and staff are putting in the work. JC Schools goes to state. Uh, we had, uh, both golf, uh, one golf team, JC HS went to state. They came in fifth. They were the best public school in three A in the state. Uh, so we had, uh, four golfers there from JC and two from CC participating. You could see the places, uh, there, uh, across the board. So congratulations for them representing our district. Uh, JCHS, uh, we talked about the, them preparing meals for the community, and you can see some of our chefs in action. Uh, we had, uh, two, uh, our doubles team, uh, went to the state quarterfinal. Uh, they came in fifth or sixth, I believe, Addison Spencer and Megan Wilde, so congratulations to them as well, uh, for their appearance down in Springfield. And then CCHS hosted the first Life Skills Unified Kickball Tournament, and I'm telling you, there was trash talking. A lot of it between the schools, and it was a fun day. Uh, JC Schools cross-country, and, uh, we have both CC, both, uh, boys and girls teams for CC advanced. Uh, they did a great job, and also JC had, uh, two of their young ladies advancing as well. Uh, CCHS team is incredibly young, and they have some seniors, but I think that they're gonna be back for a couple of years, so, uh, we're gonna see them get a trophy at some point. And we had all state choir from CC, uh, Susan and Nikki, uh, doing a great job with their voices. Uh, and then Veterans Day that I mentioned across the district, uh, really great ceremonies honoring, uh, the work that our veterans have done for our country. And we had our first swimmer to state, uh, Adam Lukanoff is our SRO at TJ, and his son Kane, uh, advanced to state, so he'll be representing the district there, our first ever. You know, our swim program is, is in its infancy, so to get someone to advance to state's a tremendous accomplishment. And then the Isinger Teacher of the Year, uh, we're accepting nominations, so if board members have nominations, or any of our students over there have nominations, we need to get you to nominate for Teacher of the Year. Um, because nominations are due by Friday, December fifth. Uh, I want to welcome our friends from Lincoln University. I know there's a class of them here seeing a, a board, uh, meeting tonight. If you want to stand up, stand up and say hi. That way you get credit. We'll get you on camera. We got you on camera, that way you get credit. And how many are JC students? I see some. KJ's here, right? Anybody else? One, two, three. Welcome, welcome back, I should say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next we'll go to Dr. Heather Bo Yoo.
Hi, good evening again. I just want to quickly echo, uh, Mr. McGraw's sentiment on, um, celebration and thank you to our staff on our APR, um, success and increases, and really want to thank you, the board members, for your support in our initiatives and goals, and we couldn't do it without that support, so thank you. Um, I do want to talk about one goal, uh, quickly here tonight, and I want to draw your attention back to our school improvement plan, um, our, also known as our strategic plan. We have traditionally, the last few years, had four priorities. Increasing student achievement, narrow the achievement gap, achieve college, career, and life readiness, and staff professional growth. But this year, we added a fifth priority, and that was community and family engagement. So our primary goals under that, um, priority are to continue to increase our attendance rate, um, to, yeah, increase our positive relationships between our staff and our families, and then to improve student self-efficacy. So one of our action steps this year was completed, and that was to send a comprehensive survey to our parents, and so I want to turn it over to our Director of Student Services, Jess James, um, who has done a great job with all of our surveys, and she's going to share with you some of the highlights of our family survey that was just completed.
Good evening. So I want to start out by just, as we get back to the beginning, uh, talking about, we've surveyed families in the past, but this is the first time we've done it in a few years, and this is the first time we've done it in our Panorama platform, which is the platform in which we also give our student survey and our staff survey. What this does is allows us to make comparisons between the three surveys, and then analyze those results against other school districts of our same size that take the same survey. So on the first slide, you see that this year, being our first year, we're really pleased to have gotten just over twelve hundred responses from families across the district. The range in our buildings were about eleven percent of families to twenty-seven percent. Um, the national average of responses on parent surveys for school districts is between five and twenty percent of families completing those surveys. So with twelve hundred responses, this is strong enough for us to make some really good decision-making based off of the survey results. We'll continually try to improve those in years to come. On each of the following slides, you'll see the topic, a summary of what questions we're asking, what we're trying to get a grasp of. On, um, the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see the percentage of favorable responses. So we give a five-point scale to our families. The top two are considered favorable responses. So it's like extremely important, all the way down to not important at all, depending on the question we ask. So to start us off, barriers to engagement. Uh, we see eighty-two percent of favorable responses. We ask families questions about what barriers they face to becoming more involved in their students' schooling and in school district-wide activities. Because our eighty-two percent is so high, this tells us that our families really aren't facing a high number of barriers to getting involved to schooling, so that tells us we can focus more on the quality and types of engagement opportunities we're focusing on rather than reducing barriers. When we look at specific, uh, information to pull out, getting to school safely was our highest response in this category with only, with ninety-three percent, so only seven percent of our families face this barrier. And then busy schedules is the barrier that most of our families are facing in getting involved in their, in their child's school. Family efficacy was sixty-six percent favorable responses. This asks questions to give us an idea of how confident families are with regard to their parenting skills and their relation to those soft skills that we expect, um, to be present in our schools. The highest area in the family efficacy questions was supporting learning at home, with seventy-seven percent of our families that completed the survey feeling very confident or highly confident that they can support learning at home. Connecting with parents was our lowest area here, so maybe they're connected, um, with supporting their own students at home, but maybe don't feel that strong support system from other families of their same age peers. Family engagement was our lowest area overall. I hope to talk about what we plan to do with this information on the last slide, but this is the degree to which families become involved and interact with their child's school. So we did have a score of twenty-three percent favorable responses. I do want to say that normatively, so when we compare this to other school districts our same size, we were at the sixtieth percentile. So while we're not really pleased with that result, we see that other school districts are getting very similar, if not lower, results. Uh, in terms of what questions, uh, were strengths or weaknesses for us, our highest area was visiting the school, so families are visiting the school with a thirty-seven percent favorable response. However, meeting in person with the teacher was nine percent. We see this on our staff survey as well, when we ask teachers the same question, how often are you meeting in person with the families? I think we've just really moved away from those in-person, very frequent meetings, and to get a favorable response, you would need to either be meeting weekly or monthly in person with your student's teacher, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Family school attendance, we really ask questions to gather their input on attendance, what barriers do you face, and how important is attendance to you and your family? With eighty-six percent favorable responses, we can really see that our families value this showing up, and this aligns directly with a lot of work we've done in our strategic, uh, plan for attendance, and this places us well above national averages. Importance of attendance was ninety-four percent favorable. Um, the question that received the lowest percentage of favorable was, how comfortable would you feel reaching out to the school district if you felt you were facing attendance challenges? Family school communication assesses how well schools are communicating with families. We had seventy-seven percent favorable responses. The ease of understanding the info that our schools are sending out was our highest area with eighty-five percent favorable. The usefulness of the information we're sharing out was at sixty-seven percent favorable. Staff and family relationships, seventy-seven percent favorable responses, and this was well above the national average, so I'm very pleased with this information. This is perceptions of faculty and staff relationships with the families at our school. So, uh, respectfulness of the staff with our families was an extremely high score of eighty-eight percent favorable, and then valuing of that parent input, do we feel like we take that information and put it into practice, was sixty-two percent. Really pulling out the two areas we hope to target at the district, all the way down to the individual level, would definitely be family engagement with a goal of increasing access points for more authentic, flexible, meaningful family participation, and then that family efficacy score with a goal of building family confidence and not just navigating the school systems, not just in helping at home. So, uh, I think we can really tell that our families want more flexible options to engage with us in a way that fits in with the, their busy schedules. Connections among families themselves are low, so we can talk about increasing opportunities for families to become involved with one another. And then for efficacy, signaling a need for more transparency and tools and access points to engage with our families. On the last slide, you'll see our next steps. Our Tier One team is actually problem-solving this data in the next couple of weeks. So we look at this data, and as a, a team with representatives from across the district, we identify what areas do we want to focus on, we set a goal, and then we put action steps in place, kind of taking our strategic plan and going above and beyond. Our buildings also have their individual data, and we'll be responding to this at the building level, and as Dr. Bo Yoo was sharing, this is in our strategic plan. Uh, we're really excited about supporting this work and focusing on those scalable solutions to making consistency with our families and get them involved. Any questions about the family survey? Yes. So, um, are you talking about the question for barriers to engagement? Yeah, so I, I think we can see that six percent, um, I know not everybody has the, um, in-depth analysis here, but about six percent of our families that responded to the survey say it's a very large or large problem. Um, what I think we can see that is definitely impeding, I think that aligns with what you're saying, Suzanne, is definitely the busy schedules. I think that that's probably a combination effect there, too. Um, we're always looking for ways to increase engagement, and I think like childcare and busy schedules are things we're seeing all the time. The great thing I can say about our district is from, everything from parent-teacher conferences to any activities at the school, we allow other siblings and children to come with them, and I've benefited from that as, as a parent in the district as well, as my young ones are coming along with me to parent-teacher conferences and Fall Festival and everything else. So I think that we are doing ways to, when we involve parents, to alleviate that, that barrier of childcare, but I do think we, we still have some barriers that we can maybe dig into this and see how we can decrease them and be more flexible with when we're offering those engagement opportunities as well. Yeah, it, it, so our families are also completing multiple surveys. So the same family, if they have a, a child at the elementary level and they also completed it, I think when we're looking at the range of responses we got, around that fifteen percent was, uh, like the range of most families in a set school building. I think that was our average response rate. So we didn't see a statistically significant difference between the amount of families with older children versus younger children that actually completed the survey. Yeah, it's interesting, um, and we're also looking for ways to just increase the responses we get so we can make more thoughtful decisions, so we're hoping to, you know, come up with more creative ways to get the survey out there as well, so, thank you.
Is there an option, uh, like after they fill out a question, where they can put in comments?
We, we don't have the open response available on the survey. It is an option. Uh, I think what we have seen in the past with having that option is the time to sit and analyze and comb through all of those responses can be really time-intensive, and we didn't want- and comb through all of those responses can be really time-intensive, and we didn't want to dissuade, we really looked at the length of the survey, and when we started, we had a forty-minute survey, and we were like, we gotta get that down to about fifteen minutes to complete the survey, and I completed it three times. So spending about forty-five minutes on a survey, but that's definitely something we can consider adding back in.
My thought was like, on one of them, for example, is it the process of giving your child to school, how hard is that? Thirty-four said quite challenging, extremely challenging, thirty-five, three percent. So there's almost seventy people that said it's extremely tough to give your kids to school. I'm just curious, what exactly, I mean, we have bus service, we have all these things, is there something else that we missed? And, I don't know, maybe, maybe there'd be an opportunity, you know, question, do your E that could pop up?
And something we can do is, we can always, if we add in back open response questions, we can ask those follow-up questions, like if you marked yes, you know, what barriers are you facing? So that's something we can definitely consider next year.
Yeah, I think we'll leave it at that, I don't think we talked about it before. On this family efficacy, on question four, looks to be the only question where we didn't get a favorable or extremely favorable response. I wonder if that's, if we're not giving ourselves credit, because that's, how confident are you in your ability to connect with other parents? I know how I answered that question, and it has nothing to do with the school.
Yes.
It has everything to do with me and the school in general. So, I kind of, I don't want us to be too hard on ourselves, since that's really the only one that was even questionable on the family efficacy section.
Yeah, I think it's interesting when we ask, how confident are you, because it's, you know, I, I think we can think through that, if this is our lowest area, maybe we can increase the, the style of those interactions. I know not everyone is gonna want to go to the PTO meetings and engage, and that might not even be something that our, our parents prioritize, but something for us to consider.
Yeah, sorry. You might see a patch right there, it's a puzzle. So what if, if we do a lot of surveys, they're gonna be, I think it's very important to figure out where to go, and much worse, but I know a lot of surveys, it would be a big deal, plus minus, so how many people just go through like this market? I can't remember, what was the percentage of these surveys?
Yeah, so the great thing about these surveys is they're sensitive in that they change where the positive side of the scale occurs and the negative. So on your first question, you can't go down and just do positive, 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 because the scale changes, so there's a reliability coefficient that's calculated, and our results, while there were a few that were flagged for inconsistencies, overall, the times, the average time spent on the survey, it tells us that, too, was above the expected time, so I feel pretty confident about that.
That's where we could, if we could do that. My last question is on family engagement, twenty-three percent. Is that communication, is it already included, like communicating, is that just a thing? Maybe you said this earlier, I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
On the back, there it is. Last part, the follow-up, so it's family engagement, district twenty-three percent?
Oh yeah, that's the percentage of those families that completed the survey.
Is there anything in here about communication that I missed that, how much does school contribute to that?
Yeah, there's an individual question in staff, family, communication, so we got a seventy-seven percent rate there. We ask questions, the following questions, how often do you receive information from your child's school? How easy is it to understand the information? How useful is it? How welcoming is your child's school? How responsive? And then we ask questions that aren't normed, about what's the best way to communicate with families.
So does it break it down by school, to give you a percentage?
It does, it does, we have all of those, they're, it's not included in your packet, but we can get that for any school.
Is there any one, was there anyone who was telling us?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, but we can look into individual responses to those questions.
I would just recognize, we look at different things, you know, if you're, if you're going to communicate well, thirty percent to our parents, and if it's our, you know, no one communicated, you would just have to bow, like, there wasn't many times in this district, I'd say they don't communicate very well, so I just want to make sure they communicate very well to our parents and their kids.
And at our upcoming Tier One team meeting, we, we really focus on district-wide data, but we always look at, are there any pockets of schools that received alarmingly low or off from, from the district average scores, and we're reaching out to those buildings and saying, hey, I think maybe some, some special attention to this section of the survey, just to make sure it's not missed in, in the chaos.
And I'm not saying it's the school-wide, not, not the personal school.
Right.
Ryan, that's you, you have a job, and it's all in the schools.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Thanks.
Next, we have our student reports, we'll go into our kids' study.
Hello, so this is gonna be my student report for the month of November. So, we did get to host Fields of Faith at Adkins Stadium, and had a really great turnout, as we do every year. Jack Leonard Jam is a community service project that Student Council hosts, and this year we got to open J Cafe during Jack Leonard Jam, which was something new that we did this year, because J Cafe was only started last school year. It was, it's a really great fundraiser for Student Council, so it was really awesome that we got to open J Cafe, it's right behind the dinosaur in that picture, you just can't see the J Cafe. Healthcare Expo was attended by our Health Sciences Program, which is Nichols, and then also by HOSA, our club, which is Health Occupational Students of America, and we got to do a lot of hands-on learning, it was a really cool experience, and a lot of us signed up to get shadowing opportunities through MU. Speech and Debate has been doing some really great things, and they've been winning a lot of tournaments. I know a lot of my friends personally have been scoring like really well this year, so that's super awesome. The Veterans Day Assembly, we did it on Veterans Day this year, and we had three different speakers, and we got to recognize our teachers, which is always super awesome. Mr. Ledgerwood is super funny, and he talked for a really long time at this assembly, and it was pretty hilarious. And then the Cheer and Dance C-Mac Showcase was also on Veterans Day that night, we've never done that before. I'm hoping that they do it again next year, and they have a, more people show up, because I do think it was a lot of parents, but both teams are competing this weekend in C-Mac, so it just happened to line up that Dance and Cheer could do this on the same weekend. And then the Pancake Breakfast was this morning, and we actually ended up running out of pancake batter, which doesn't usually happen, so that was really cool, we had a lot of people buying pancakes, because we used that money that we fundraised to give back to a charity for veterans. Some other recent events was the Somo Pep Rally that J.C. Stuko got asked to run the Assembly for, and then the Catch Me If You Can Musical, which I know had a really great turnout. Some upcoming events, the parent-teacher conferences that were going on right now, and tomorrow is the MASC Northeast District Meeting for Student Council, and then the HOSA and Red Cross Blood Drive is gonna be on November twentieth, so I'm hoping that I can give blood again this year.
All right, thank you very much, and Mara, for your D.C.
Hi, everyone, I wasn't able to be here last month, so I had to walk to catch you all up on. To start out with, I wanted to do some shout-outs again. So we had another one of our athletes recognized as Athlete of the Week for KWOS, it was one of our senior football players, Jalen Thomas. We had another senior football player, Weston Schofield, who was recognized as C-Mac All-Conference. Then another one of our senior athletes, Katie Danic, was, she received two thousand career assists for volleyball. Over in the middle is a poster, it's just a big thank you to our custodial staff, we, our school is amazing, and that could not happen without our custodial staff, so we're so grateful for them. We had Ryan Thicke, who was inducted into the Class of Twenty Twenty-Six MBCA Hall of Fame, and then we had two of our senior choir girls who were All-State Choir this year, as well as one of our sophomores who was mixed on our choir, and I believe she gets to go to New Mexico for that this year, which is exciting. And then a bunch of all-district band members. Lately, going on, so we had our volleyball game on the football field, I heard from so many staff and students, even volleyball players, just how fun that was for them. Down at the bottom, you can see our Veterans Assembly that we also had this Tuesday, we had one of our students speak, he plans to serve, and he spoke about his plans to serve, and also how his dad serves, and then we recognized some of our staff members who've served. Then up at the top, CCHS and J.C. Counseling, they have done some like financial aid workshops for students and parents, kind of teaching them opportunities that are out there, and just ways to navigate the craziness that is financial aid and going into college. We had our Blood Drive, that I believe was run by FCCLA, over thirty units of blood were donated, so we're so grateful to see that. And then up at the top, we had our first Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy, so these students, they're just focused on community service, and they went around to all the elementary schools and delivered books. And then sports, we have a lot of sports to recognize this month. So our boys soccer team, they made it to the district tournament finale, and then, I think Mr. McGraw basically spoke on all of this, so I'm reiterating, but we had a swim team member who made it to state, as well as our golf girls and tennis, and then cross-country. We had five softball girls who made it first-team all-district, and then two who are second-team all-district, and then of course, our football team, who's going to the district championship tomorrow in Lebanon, so we talked to the school this week, so we're all really excited. And then academic, the, over on the left is the pictures they showed of the real-world simulation for the finance classes, and then down at the bottom, there's a three-D art class, one of the classes who did some Halloween short stories on Halloween, there's HBS, which is Human Body Systems, and they did a KT cave unit, and then up at the top is Ms. Madsen's annual Barbie drop in AP Stat. My Barbie was the only one to survive, so you guys can trust her with your lives. And then homecoming, it feels like a million years ago, but again, wasn't able to be here last month. So we had Powder Puff, where our senior girls won, I think the best part of the night was getting to watch all the guys do cheerleading, it was so fun. And then we had our parade downtown again this year, all of our sports came out and had floats, as well as all of our theater schools, and then we did our pep rally at the end at the Capitol. Up at the top, and actually all around the slide, you can see pictures from our Assembly, we had all of our fall sports speak, as well as Ms. Mariani in her banana suit, which correlates to our Minion Night, which was the theme of our football game that Friday. We recognized our homecoming King and Queen at that Assembly, which was Jamila Lee and Evan Shaker, and then over to the right, you can see our math department, they dressed up for one of the spirit days, which was Duo Day, and they were all skips, which was funny. And then Cavalier Community, so it's been, I think maybe this year or last year, until they started something called Lunch Bunch, which every Wednesday, or the last Wednesday of every month, they put together a big long table in our lunchroom, and so all of the students from the special education class sit at the table, and then as well as anyone at lunch wants to participate, and so that's been a great opportunity to make friends with some of the kids from the special education class, as well as just sit with people at lunch that you've never sat with before. They're big about promoting inclusivity and just unity in our school. Over to the left is an art project they made, which I thought was super sweet, they did like thumbprints, and then decorated it to look like yourself, so it was super cute. And then coming up, so both our dance and cheer teams have C-Mac, so I think cheer's on Sunday, and then dance is Saturday and Sunday, and then our holiday showcase that happens, this is our fifth annual, so there's a dinner, and then there's the performance, where all of our arts perform, and it's, they do a great job.
All right, thank you very much, I do love one of the holiday jerkers, so that's always exciting. Okay, next we'll move on to the consent agenda, everyone should have these items in your board packet, if you've had a chance to review, unless anyone has any questions, I will entertain a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All approved, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. And next, I think we just have some future dates, Thanksgiving break is November twenty-four through the twenty-eighth, next regular board meeting is Wednesday, December tenth, then winter break is the twenty-second through January second, and the January board meeting after that is January eighth. And at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn closed. That's me.
Oh yeah, I, I would say before any Lincoln screenings that need a signature on the agenda, we've got copies up here, so come on up. Close meeting, A, motion to suspend open and in a closed meeting, my roll call vote for Senate, the chapter six, one, zero, point, zero, two, one, advice, and some security section, one, action, that's three highly binding disciplines, like March of Troy, thirteen individuals identified with personal records, and fourteen records which are protected from exposure level.
All right, do I have a second? All in favor?
All.
All, yes.
Yes.